We're gonna. Okay, cool. So what we're gonna talk about today is this tool that I built out yesterday called Smart Listing AI. And what it is, is it creates high converting listing content in minutes from the MLS descriptions to social posts. And pretty much, I take a new listing, I want help marketing it. I don't have my own, you know, listing coordinator, I don't have the time to make all of this stuff up. Or maybe I just don't really have the bandwidth or the desire to do a lot of this stuff because hey, I'm not really super good at it. I've been using AI to help me create some flyers and help me create some social media posts, but it's always a challenge because, hey, I'm not a copywriter, I really don't know what to say, I don't know what to ask this, this, this computer to give me exactly what I want. And basically what this tool will do is it takes all of that stuff out from you and it's like stupid easy to use. So let me kind of walk you through what this looks like. And so I'm gonna get out of this slide screen. I'm gonna go into the chat GPT screen. Can you guys all see my chat GPT screen? Daniel, Daniel, can you see it? Okay, cool. So, um, yeah, it, you can, and you can't search for this in the GPT store, I made it private because right now it's only for you guys. And so you have to have the link, or you have to have that QR code to be able to get to it. Okay? And, um, and, uh, I mean, you could share it with, you could share the link with people if you want to share the link with people, and they could still get to it. But it's not searchable in this GPT store. So just to show you what that looks like real quick. If you aren't on the paid version, there are all these custom GPTs and think of them as like apps for your phone. Hey, I wanna get help with AI and video, or I wanna have AI PDF drive, or hey, there's Xpedia on here that's created one. Um, there's all these different tools that you can use that are in here. Uh, there's Canva that is tied to chat GPT. So a lot of really great stuff to where as a business expense, this is probably the best business expense you could do and it's twenty bucks a month. Alright, so if you want to use this tool, you can use that link, it'll take you to the smart listing AI. Um, and you don't even need to ask it anything, you could just literally click the button, right? I should actually rename this easy button. And it's gonna walk you through everything that it needs in order to create an entire listing marketing plan for you with created assets that you don't even need to prompt it to, 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 to ask it stuff. Because I already did that on the back end of this to make it like super high calls to action and hooks for social media posts. Uh, a language that's targeted at the specific buyers that are going to be most likely to buy the property. Uh, lots of stuff. So let me show you what this looks like and how easy it is to use. So when you log in, you just hit start marketing your listing. And then it's going to kind of walk you through some prompts and just dumb stuff that you should know. So I'm gonna just use my home address. Alright, so I put my address in. Cool, what's next? Let me hit retry. There we go. Sometimes the tech does some weird things. So if it, we continue to have problems with this. Let me just try this one more time. I love it when you're planning on doing something around technology and then the technology doesn't cooperate with you. So I'm gonna get out of there real fast. I'm gonna log into an incognito window and see if I can get that to fix it for me. And then if we do, um, we'll pivot. And I'll show this to you guys at a later date, or I'll create a video and I'll send to you guys as well too. Um, alright, so let me go into chat. Might be a cookie issue or a problem with that. Sometimes those are the things that hang our technology up. And hopefully, this will fix it. If not, like I said, we'll pivot and we'll talk about something else. Alright. We'll try this one more time. Hopefully this fixes the problem.
Uh, we can't see your, your screen.
Okay, I'll, uh, I'll share a new screen. That's right, I opened up an incognito window. Thanks for the reminder, that helps. Can you see now?
Yes.
Okay, cool. Fingers crossed. There we go. Alright, so it was just an issue with cookies and cache and all the storage in my normal thing. So uh, that's one thing with tech, it's a tip that was unplanned to talk to you guys about. But if you're having problems with tech, sometimes your website's trying to read old data that is stored on your computer and you're trying to enter new data in, and it causes problems. Uh, so if you ever run into that, uh, you can either clear your cookies and cache or you can open up an incognito window and have a new browsing session. So I'm assuming that's what happened. Okay, so now it's gonna ask you what the list price of the property is. So rather than you having to come up with a bunch of stuff, um, that you ba- it basically just asking you simple questions that you should know the answers to, right? Now it's asking what's the MLS number available? It's okay if you don't have it, I'm gonna say, hey, I don't have the MLS number yet. So maybe I didn't enter it on the MLS yet. And that's okay. Ah, great stuff. Quick retry a couple times. So obviously this wasn't a cookies and cash issue. It was something that's going on with chat GPT. So I'm gonna just refresh the screen one more time. Okay, cool. So sometimes you just gotta refresh the screen too. Um, next thing says what's the square footage of the home? And we're gonna put the square footage in. And then after that, it's gonna ask how many beds and how many baths? Five beds? Three point five baths? So this is all information that you're going or that you should know about the house, right? And so like I said, it's not you having to be super creative, it's just answering questions. And again, I apologize, this has nothing to do with what I built. It has every, everything's a problem, I think, with what's going on with chat GPT this morning. Uh, what's the lot size? Lot size, point three acres? And then what year was the property built? So then you put that in there as well too. It's asking you some basic questions. Now, one of the things too, uh, that as you're doing this, this is taking you as through a step by step process. At the beginning of this, uh, if you don't want to go through the step by step process later, as you get more comfortable with using it, um, then i- if you just want to enter stuff in, in like a paragraph form, it'll actually allow you to do that. Uh, so that, uh, it, it makes it, it's intuitive to the sense where, hey, um, uh, if I want to skip over all these kind of questions because I just know what to enter in there, uh, then there's kind of like a speed version, uh, if you guys want to use the speed version too. And then it's gonna ask what kind of property type is it? We're almost done with the questions, I promise. Cool. And then it's asked, are there any notable upgrades or renovations? They're making it challenging on me, right? But we'll get through it. Now the chat wants to process stuff slow, so that's always fun too. Any questions so far while we're waiting for this to process?
Hey, John, it's Emilio. Good morning. Quick question, is there a preferred browser for, for this, or is that not?
I don't know, I just always use Chrome.
Okay.
Uh, what flooring types are throughout the home? So then you, that's kind of the next question, carpet? Travertine? And laminate? And then what are the kitchen features? Uh, granite? Custom? Cabinets? And stainless appliances? I wanna retype that whole thing, so I'm gonna copy that out and we'll just kind of keep refreshing the window till we make it through this thing, right? There we go. Nice kitchen setup, what are the bathroom features? Dual vanities? In the primary suite? Full bath? With? I'm gonna put this dual vanity full bath? With jetted tub? Another full bath? With dual vanities? Upstairs? Full bath and a half bath downstairs. So basically you're entering the information and then it's gonna kind of sift through the information to find out what are the really great points about the house uh, that it's going to use for its marketing, right? Uh, are there any unique features? Gas fireplace? In the living room? And full suite with, or, and suite? With full bath downstairs? I wish I had a wine cellar. Excellent features, what are the exterior features? Uh, pool? Outside? Front, uh, or fountain? And in a full, holdy sack? Location? And put quiet? Sounds like a dream backyard. Uh, what is the parking situation? Two car garage, carport, blah, blah, blah. Three car dat- attached? And then, can you provide any roof siding or landscaping materials? Tile roof? Stucco siding? And fully landscaped? Front and back with all of trees? Are there any location highlights? So now it's asking about the neighborhood. Close to schools? Walking distance? To Jackton Golf Course? And close to, um, freeways? And downtown? Ripon? Amenities? Okay, so now I think that's, uh, pretty much it for the questions. This is the last one. No neighborhood? Name? It looks like chat finally got through whatever issues it was having. Uh, are there any HOA amenities? If no HOA, just let me know. No HOA? Perfect. Are there professional photos, videos or 3D tours available for the property? So that if you had those photos available and they can utilize the photos in some of the marketing. If you don't have it, that's okay, you can add some of those stuff later. If you do have those photos and videos, uh, then you can upload those in there as well too. Now, this is an interesting one and we've talked about on this call before. Uh, no problem, once they're ready, I can help integrate them into your marketing. Would you like me to create a buyer persona for this property? Uh, and if you don't know, or if you haven't been on this call where we've talked about this before, a buyer persona helps you target the right audience for your listing by identifying the ideal buyer profile. So if you know who your target audience is, then you can say, no, I don't need that, uh, I know my own. Uh, and here's the my target, who's, here's who I'm targeting for this property. If you don't know who your target buyer is, uh, then just say yes here. And then what this is going to do is it's going to look at the location, the price point, um, the amenities of the house. And it's going to say, uh, in this world, or, uh, you know, who is the ideal buyer, or who's the typical buyer, or what does that buyer look like? In terms of what they're looking for lifestyle wise, what's important to them? Because what the system will then do is it will actually adjust your marketing materials to use language and to use uh, imagery, uh, that will appeal or attract to the person is most likely to, or the type of person uh, that is most likely to buy your house or buy your listing, right? So it's not like, you know, redlining or any of that kind of stuff, it's just saying, okay, hey, listen, um, because race doesn't, or jo- or job, or religion, or any of that stuff doesn't come into play here, it's just, hey, you know, uh, this is an upscale neighborhood, uh, high price points, uh, it's, you know, so it's looking at things like, uh, what are the professions that will probably be attracted to a home like this? What's the income of the, of the, of the people that might be looking at buying something like this? What are the things that are typically important to that group? Uh, what are the things that they value? What are they looking for neighborhood wise and amenity wise? Uh, and then it'll create really great marketing to appeal to that group of people. Okay? Uh, so I'm gonna just say yes. And then now we're pretty much done, uh, as far as for most of the questions that we have to answer. Uh, it's gonna take a second. Says, okay, uh, great, I'll create a tailored buyer persona based on everything you've shared. Now, for the final step, what would you like me to create? So if you only wanted to create certain things out of this, uh, then you can say, you can just enter those in. Or if you want all of it, you could just put in, I want the full marketing suite, right? So I really tried, like I said, to simplify this to where it's like, hey, if you hired an admin, I think you guys can all see, any, but I could write down those details and I can give this to my teenager and they can be the one that would be enter this stuff in, right? So it says amazing choice, a full marketing suite is on its way. One final question before I start crafting, would you like to include the fair housing disclaimer in your marketing materials? This is typically added into MLS descriptions and email campaigns. So I put this feature in there because different people that might use this might have to have fair housing disclaimers in certain things. Um, if you don't typically put this in your email campaigns or your MLS descriptions, then just say no. If you want it to add a fair housing disclaimer into your MLS descriptions and your email campaigns, then you could put yeah, right? Uh, so I'm gonna just say no on this so that it doesn't add that in. But this makes sure that if we're using this and we're creating things and we do live in an area where we're gonna get into trouble by not putting that stuff in, it can add it in there for you. Alright. So now it says I got everything to create your full marketing suite, sit tight, I'm putting it together for you now. And then basically boom, here is your full marketing suite. I got my MLS description. I'm not gonna read through this because I don't think you guys want me to sit here and read a bunch of text. Um, in addition to my MLS description, I got three Instagram posts, one that's going to be just listed, one that's gonna highlight this great kitchen. And then one that's gonna highlight the community by living here. So we are appealing to people with the information, we're appealing to people with, you know, looking back at the buyer persona. Uh, a great kitchen is something that this probably deemed as being important to a buyer of this property. So it created one focusing in on the kitchen. And then the lifestyle that that buyer persona wanted, uh, it, it really appeals, uh, to that. And it puts hashtags, emojis, all that stuff in here. It gives you three different Facebook posts to post as well too, a listing announcement, a neighborhood highlight and a final call to action. And then it has LinkedIn posts, professional highlight or an investment perspective. It has some TikTok ideas for videos that you can do. Uh, and then for your property flyer, here's all the information that should go on to the flyer. Like I said, if we had the images already and we could upload those in, then it can give us a little bit better kind of like perspective on what the flyer might look like too. Um, if you're gonna do a just listed postcard, uh, on the front, just listed in Ripon, twelve sixty seven Spyglass Court, one point three million, beautiful five bedroom home with pool. Uh, and then on the back, uh, you're gonna wanna put the highlights of the home, the agent photo and info and a call to action that says, you know, call today for private showing. If I want to send an email blast out to my, um, out to my group, uh, it is going to give me an email campaign, a subject just listed gorgeous five bedroom home in Ripon with pool. And then the body of emails is going to say all of this information. Uh, and then it gives you a four week content calendar. So now I know what I'm going to post on my socials for the next four weeks. On the first week, Monday, I'm gonna post on Instagram the just listed carousel post. On Tuesday, I'm gonna take the Facebook post it made for me with a listing announcement. On Wednesday, I'm gonna do a TikTok video that has a quick home tour. And I'm not gonna read through all of these, but basically now it gives you an actual schedule on what to post and what days to post. And then the buyer persona that it created for me was dual income professionals or growing families looking for upscale suburban living. Values outdoor space, top rated schools and homes that accommodate guests or multi-gen family needs. Enjoys entertaining golf and quick freeway access for commutes or weekend getaways, right? And then, um, if you want it to create a client facing, uh, marketing plan that you can send to your clients to say, here's how we're marketing your property, uh, then it'll create a PDF that you can send to your clients if you want it to do it. And then if you want to create a marketing timeline and a checklist, uh, of all the things so that you can print that out and make sure that you don't miss anything, uh, then it can create those as well too. So if I want that, I can say, um, give me the client facing marketing plan PDF. For example. Nope, I think I gotta do it over here in the box over here because I opened up a canvas. So let me put, put it here instead. So let me get out of the canvas. It's still writing all this stuff out. So here's the client facing marketing plan. Right? Here's all the stuff that basically you're going to do that you can send to your client. Would you like this formatted into a downloadable PDF version to present or an email to your seller? Downloadable PDF. Alright, it's back. Let's try this, uh, refresh again. It's been working for us so far. And then I'll just walk you through, and so now I got this downloadable PDF that I can send to my clients. And this just gives a nice little summary of all the things that we're going to do to help market their property. In addition, what I didn't mention is that there's a lot of stuff on the back end of this. Um, all of those things are optimized for SEO. Um, and all the things are basically optimized to help you get the most, uh, you know, looks and likes and shares and things like that on your, uh, social posts as well too, right? So now it's really easy for you to be able to, uh, share that stuff with your clients. Okay, uh, one last thing real quick because I know we're just about to time and then I'll stick around if you guys have some questions. Uh, but hey, uh, give me the checklist now. So if you wanted to have a checklist, then it can create a checklist for you, um, so that it can, uh, so that you can keep track of the things that you need to, to get done, right? So, and then, there you go. Pre-launch checklist, launch week, uh, and all of that good stuff. So you can also, in addition to this, you can also ask it all kinds of other stuff. So if you wanted to say, for example, what else can you do for me? Then it's gonna tell you everything that it can do. Uh, and so you got that. If you want more social media captions or posts, it can do that. Um, if you want it to be able to, um, remember that you've done this before and do a shorter version so you don't have to walk through all those questions, uh, then you can do that as well too. Uh, you can do open house promotion plans, weekly marketing reports, custom scripts, client gift ideas or touch point strategies. Uh, if you want something around your brand, uh, you know, building a social media brand templates, you can ask it that. Uh, and, um, uh, there's just a lots of things that you can do to help promote your listings with this tool. Okay, cool. Like I said, try to make it super easy. Um, looks like Daniel put all this stuff in there. Uh, this just makes it so that if, hey, if I'm not an AI expert, like I said, what I showed you guys today, you can have probably your high schooler, if you gave them the list of stuff to enter, uh, just enter that stuff in and then now everything's created for you. Is this helpful? Alright, like I said, uh, the only thing it requires is that you have a chat GPT pro account, um, because you can't use custom GPTs if you don't. But if you have one or if you're going to get one, um, this process just makes using the AI super stupid easy, right? Uh, any questions that you guys have, any, anything, any ah-hahs? Okay, uh, well, uh, one last thing before I let you guys go, because I know we're two minutes over, uh, is, um, I want you to consider everything that I did. Now, obviously if I wasn't, if chat GPT's website wasn't having its issues and if I wasn't explaining, going slow and explaining stuff to you, how long would it have taken me to enter that data in? We're talking five minutes max. How long would it have taken me to create all the content that it created for me if I was to be doing that manually? Long time, right? Uh, so use the tools, uh, put some more time back into your life and make some more money.
I'll say, John, you're taking way too many excuses. People might not want to lead gen.
Cool. Well, this gives you more time for Legion.
Of course.
Right? Uh, and, and that's really the thing, technology's not supposed to replace agents. Technology's supposed to make it easier for agents to create more time to develop deeper relationships with people and let you do what you do best, which is, you know, um, again, uh, you know, solving people's problems and developing relationships with people so that they use you. Um, not the highest and best use of my time creating a flyer or creating a marketing piece, uh, going out and having coffee with a potential client. That's a much more effective use of my time. Cool, guys. Uh, if you need anything or if you have any questions, uh, let me know.
Hey, John, I have one question. Jerry Hager here from Coastal. Uh, yeah, we really appreciate you, you're always a, you know, a good wealth of knowledge. Um, where were the video? I noticed that was recorded, where was, where will this be posted?
Uh, I'll send it to Kim to put on our KW Shares YouTube page.
Okay, amazing. Alright, thank you.
Cool, guys. Uh, if you need anything or if you have any other questions. Cool, guys, uh if you need anything or if you have any other questions, uh you could just reach out to me, uh emails, john J O H N Morris M O R I S at KW dot com. See you guys.
Thank you, John.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.